...of '02, on Monday, September 18th. This is a special meeting regarding the interim superintendent search. Before I move on to our agenda, I'm going to read our land acknowledgement. "We are gathered on the land of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples. I ask you to join me in acknowledging the Dakota and Ojibwe community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. St. Louis Park Public Schools also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this school district is located. This acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to dismantling the ongoing legacies of colonial power and the district's desire to support the ongoing work of local indigenous communities to thrive in our schools." Okay, we have two items on our agenda. One is a discussion item, interim superintendent search. Barb Dorn from MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Association, is going to present information on the search. And then an action agenda item will be to approve moving forward with an interim search. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Sarah. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Second, by Ken. I think we need a roll call. So Heather, are you able to call the roll from where you are? Okay.
Yep. Ken, I'm sorry, I can't see. Is Audrey Hapke in there as well?
Yep, we're all here.
Okay, just checking. Okay, so Virginia?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Sarah Davison?
Sarah Davison?
Aye.
Colin?
Colin?
Aye.
Ken?
Ken?
Aye.
Happy Hecky?
Happy Hecky?
Aye.
And Heather will be, aye.
All right. So the first item on our agenda is the search. So Barb Dorn is here from MSBA. Thank you so much for joining us, Barb. As I mentioned, last Tuesday when we were here, this is a support that MSBA can provide to us, that she could attend a meeting of the board to kind of review our options as we look for an interim superintendent to serve out this school year, and as well as answer any questions that the board has. She's going to provide a brief overview of statutes and other processes relative to the position of a superintendent, and the board's responsibilities in the hiring process, and some kind of typical timelines, and actions that we would need to take. So Barb, do you have anything else you need me to say in introduction?
I don't think so.
All right. Take it away. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, everyone, I really appreciate the opportunity to meet today. My name is Barb Dorn. I am the Director of Leadership Development and Executive Search here at School Board Association. What I'd like to do with the meeting is share with you and you in general how an interim search might differ from traditional full search terms of superintendent, as well as to briefly add some things related to the process in terms of the timeline, the vetting process, and the board's role in handling that person. I'd like to keep it relatively informal, if that's okay with everyone, so feel free to interrupt me. I'm going to present some general information, but at any point, if you have questions, please stop me. I can't see everyone, so I'm sure that you're going to interrupt me if someone has a question or whatever we're speaking about at the moment. I don't have a lot of information for you other than a general overview, but I do want to answer any and all questions you as board members might have about the interim superintendent search. So that's the question, everyone. I just want to make a quick check, does everyone have anything about what I'm going to be thinking about in general? Just a tentative overview of what I'd like to talk about in this situation.
Barb, Virginia and Heather don't have the one you sent me, the agenda you sent me today, or the other day. So can we put that up on the screen?
We will. This is the right way to want to share. And let me know if you can see it. Is that good?
Yep.
Terrific. Should I give a little bit so people can see it?
That would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
How's that?
How's that? Great.
All right. So here's what I'm planning to cover, but again, I wanted to fit the St. Louis Park Public Schools. So if there's something else you'd like to discuss in addition to this, or as I go along, just let me know. When you are looking for an interim superintendent, the first thing I want boards to be aware of is that there are really two types of candidates that are typically interested in the opportunity. And the kind of candidate that ultimately selects will have some implications on the full search you may be doing later in the year. So the two types of people interested in this position will tend to be, first, someone who is a former superintendent. They may be retired. They may be used to being as a consultant. But they are people who are on a project basis. They are looking to step in to continue the good work of the district moving forward through the end of the school year, through the end of fiscal year, June 30th. And then they will exit. And so those are candidates that tend to be that project-based kind of person. The other kind of candidate that is interested in the opportunity is someone who is wanting to be considered for the more permanent position down the road. And so that person is looking for the opportunity to, I wouldn't really call it an audition, but they would like to be considered for the permanent position when that opportunity arises, whether or not you're not in full search. So depending upon which sort of candidate you end up selecting at St. Louis Park, it's going to have some implications, particularly in terms of the pool. And the reason I say that is people who are in it for the short term. They are ambassadors for the position. They may be somewhat involved in answering questions from candidates about the position itself, or a district, or a board, and then they will be on their way. The other kind of candidate that is interested in the opportunity themselves, due to potential conflict of interest, usually does not field those sort of phone calls from interesting candidates, because they themselves may be very interested in this opportunity. Occasionally, if there is an interim candidate who is interested in the job, and they are making that known publicly, and I'm not saying everyone does, sometimes that can result in a smaller pool, because there is some sense of an internal candidate having a leg up on the position. And we'll get into some data privacy issues here in a bit, but the general sense is, if someone's looking to consider this an opportunity to show the board and the district the sort of leader they are, so that they have a chance to throw their hat in the ring, you want to make sure you're very clear with those individuals as to whether or not they would be granted that opportunity. There have been boards in the past, when they bring on an interim superintendent, they make the decision early on as to whether or not the person in the position will have the opportunity to throw their hat in the ring. So that might be something you want to think about. Usually, it's yes, absolutely, whoever's our interim is certainly welcome to apply for the position. You need to be thoughtful in making that decision, however, because if it is an interim who also wants a permanent job, that can again result in a smaller pool of people, because they don't want their names to go public if that person has a leg up. So that's the two kinds of folks, usually that step up and contact us when they hear of no names, such as yours at St. Louis Park. Are there any questions on that? Is this a general observation? Please, please. No? Okay, good. So then I'm going to talk a little bit about normality in terms of interim superintendent search. It is typically much less formal. You do need someone in there as your interim. You do not have three months to conduct a search for an interim superintendent. The role that this person will be is stepping into the shoes of the superintendent, to keep the wheels on the bus, to keep initiatives moving forward. Their role is not necessarily to bring a lot of change to the district. They're not meant to be changing in any way. They are meant to keep the forward progress. They are meant to be leader. They are meant to provide stability during the transition for the more permanent person. So the urgency is a bit more. I would suggest that you are able to start this week if possible, and within a couple weeks, maybe have someone named as your interim. No, you're not under deadline per se, because you do have an acting superintendent. And that is actually, there are many districts that not have any one district that have license that can step in as acting superintendent, because you have that at St. Louis Park. You have a little time to consider the interim candidates. But generally, it moves much more quickly in terms of timeline. The stakeholder is not as thorough. He will not be conducting a survey, focus groups, or any of those things to get into stakeholders, because he simply do not have time. And so you want to be careful of that. You do also do not let show a leadership profile and identify criteria necessarily as thoroughly as you will when it comes to your full search. You will obviously want to look for someone who does have experience. Generally, someone with superintendent experience makes the ideal hire, because they do not need to have a learning curve as a model, and serving in the shoes as your interim. And then the brochure and the post-it. Typically, a search, whatever search might work, put together a full brochure, demographic, statistics, vision mission, all those things about your district. With an interim that's not as necessary, once again, because it needs the time, you really do not have time to do all of those things, which here under formal search, you will do if and when you conduct more of a full search. So are there any questions on this being more informal, much more quick in terms of the stakeholder involvement, and the timeline, and so on and so forth? Okay. Hearing none. The other thing that I would say relative to the essence of this is typically with an interim search, we would recommend that the board chair to do some of the vetting for you. A couple of reasons as, one, again, in the interest of time. When there's a search, the board really needs to be involved in every step of the process. With an interim search, you do not. However, we do not want any considerations thrown, it will not be violated. So if the chair alone is tasked with talking to interested candidates, having gotten that direction of the board, the chair would be able to bring back potentially one person for the board's consideration. And the reason I say that is because many of these folks that have been superintendents, they are not interested in going through a competitive interview process. And according to state statutes, as soon as the board interviews a candidate, they're considered a finalist for a position, their name goes public. And many of the people that are looking to assist you in this role, they've got seasoned experience, they either do, they don't need to go through a process where they are submitting materials. They aren't necessarily going to meet with the board, engage with a colleague, those sorts of things. So we do recommend that you do charge your board chair with finding someone who is interested in any criteria the board is looking for. But once the whole board is involved, again, that name goes public. Now, it's possible, speaking with candidates, whether they come from MSBA or elsewhere, they will say, you know what, I'm going through a better process, I'd be more than happy to interview with the board against whoever else is there. That's something you can sure take a look at doing, if that's something that you better than perhaps one person may draw before. But generally, it's mainly because of the data privacy laws. These folks want to be the sole finalists, and meet with the board to continue the work that the board is already looking for in your district, what is coming here. I did mention this statute, there are a couple that definitely apply. I mentioned the only law. Every step of the superintendent search must be done in the open. So as a board, when you do meet with a candidate, if you're trying to ask any questions, for example, if you're discussing or deliberating who you want to bring on, that is in session. The only time you can close a meeting relative to your superintendent is for superintendent evaluation. But the full search process, whether it is a formal search or interim search, does need to be in session. Balancing that is the private data laws, Minnesota government data practice act. And as I briefly mentioned, that would be your policy. The names of athletes always should be private data, whether it's for interim search or a full search. They're private data except when they become finalists for a permanent position. And statute defines someone who has been selected to be by the school board as the finalist. And so those are the types of statutes that might affect you. The very last one that will affect you would be the EEOC requirements. And so in this case, I always refer to your HR department. Even with the interim search, it might be a very good idea to post the opportunity on your website for however late the time may be necessary, to ensure that no one claims that they were discriminated against in applying for the interim position. It can be very, very simple, however. You could submit your name, your work experience, and your contact information. For example. You can keep it very, very simple. But again, that's something you can consider in terms of HR policies, however you would like to do that, we just recommend that be posted, and perhaps the chair be authorized to visit candidates who are interested. So that touches on the data practice act as well. Am I going to be clear or am I okay?
Okay. Everybody's good.
Great. So then I would say the next track going here, obviously, must be licensed as a superintendent in the state of Minnesota. That is a given, but it's always something we want to mention, to ensure that you are binding by the environment as well. Whoever will be your interim superintendent will also go through a work process to become the Iowa State of Minnesota. That's the identified official authority, and people in the state of Minnesota know exactly what I'm talking about there. In terms of contracts, we do have an interim superintendent model contract, in addition to the superintendent model contract we have. Both of those contracts we have developed in partnership with MASA, the Administrators' Association in Minnesota. So if it's an interested board, I can certainly share the interim model contract with you. That is something that is generally super simple. They're there for extra time, they'll be paid this. The one thing to think about is negotiations with the successful candidate. Some of them do not need or want health insurance. They may not need or want retirement benefits. And so oftentimes, those benefits, because they perhaps have officially retired from this district, sometimes those benefits, they're looking for a pay in those benefits. Everything else in terms of sick time, vacation time holidays, all of those, might be the same as your current interim contract. But generally, it's a short contract, other than there's an area to sort of dump in what the negotiating terms are with the compensation package for your interim superintendent. For now, I'm going to stop talking, because those are the gist of what it is to consider, but I'm sure you may have some specific questions for St. Louis Park. So I'm going to stop sharing, if that's okay. And take whatever questions board members might have about your next steps.
I have one question here, and presuming that we find a great candidate, I'm not that concerned about it, but I just wanted to know if that model language talks about resignation or termination of an interim superintendent? If there's, you know, what happens if that's not a right choice, that one or the other party decides on that, so.
That's a great question. There should be a language in the interim superintendent contract relative to that. If it's not to, like, obviously, your contract, you draft it anyway. I would suggest you talk to your legal counsel and insert the language that you want there. I could also send you the model tenant contract, as much as likely, and might give a little bit more detailed information around that possibility. We always recommend that the contract, whatever you choose, go through your district's legal counsel to ensure it's what you're looking for. But yes, that should be in there.
It's the same question.
Ken had the same question. Anyone else here in the room have questions, Heather or Virginia?
I just have a quick question. What kind of procedure do you need to go through in order to get the chair the power to move forward with this process? Do we have to take a vote, or what would be the next step for that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would recommend you take a vote, just to ensure that everyone's on the same page. Clarity of expectation is so important to building trust in the process, trust with the community in all of this. So as transparent as you can be about decisions we're making, the better for everyone. So I would suggest a very simple motion to authorize the chair to visit with that selected candidate, bring back to the board, unless the board would like to see two or three people, that may cause a couple to drop out, again, because they don't want their name to go public. They'd like to go in knowing that they have a support chair and probably the board. But you can certainly do that. Just a simple motion. I would ask the chair to do this, just so no one's confused about next steps. I have had some calls, so. Just to know. We're still interested in you. And I would say all of the people that I've spoken with are in it for the education, and they're in it for very, very good reasons. And so I think you are sitting well. I don't consider this a crisis at all. And we help districts all the time that it contracts, whatever re- superintendent steps down. So this is a process that a lot of boards have been through, and it's always gone very, very well.
So Barb, can you say more for the other people that, so how would I get names, then? What does that process look like?
I would reach out to people that contacted me, just to let them know if the board takes action today, for example, to authorize a chair to have those conversations. I would reach out to the people that I've already heard from, and let them know what the next steps might be, and ask them if they're right to share their contact information with the board chair. Once I get that authorization, I would forward that information to Anne, her to follow up on. I'm also happy to have Anne, many of these people are facing this to us, and so I can share my impressions of those individuals. There may be some either have or will, which I'll directly to her as board chair, which is also completely acceptable, if she has received the association from the board to talk to those folks. Then what I'd recommend that she would do is do a look at their background. Some of the new references, they may not quite, particularly if they retired last year. Take a look at their background. Obviously, you want to do a social media sweep, it's a little bit more available that way. You certainly can ask for references, and each of these individuals. And you also want to share with them who is St. Louis Park, because every district is unique, and you want someone that aligns with your value system, and what it is you're looking for in your leader. So having those conversations is what we call vetting, looking into that information. And then I would recommend that they decide if you want to, and if you'd like to bring back, have that meeting hopefully set up, so this doesn't drag out too long. And I would encourage every school board to be available for that meeting, because you all want to be part of the decision to decide if the right person for you to finish up for you or not.
Go ahead, Virginia.
So just to, I'm sorry, did I get, did I mention this? I don't know. Yes. Okay. Some of this is familiar to me, because we've had a part in terms of processing the job. My question is, like, what is the expected timeline for this to happen? Because you just said we should all be on board to have the.
So if we get in the authorization today, and start having conversations with candidates, does that mean by, like, early, because we have a board meeting next Tuesday, so that, does it mean by potentially next week? Do we have a meeting to bring forward, or are we talking like two weeks down the road? Like, what is the, what is the normal sort of timeline to have to come to the table?
That's a great question. The normal language of the area is district by district. I think in this circumstance, it's a high-profile position. It's public, in some cases it's not public, it's going to need some time getting word out. But the word is out in this case, so it could be more condensed in time frame than searches where we need to reach out, people that know the opportunity exists. We may even post it on MSBA's website, if word is not out in your case. So I would say that you have samples that are very ready to talk to me as early as they are tomorrow. Depending upon their stances and comfort level, perhaps they would be available to meet with the board next week at your regular meeting. That would be pretty quick, but I think it would be pretty quick, because you are already stepping into the process, simply by people know about this opportunity, and word spreads among the district, which the district is looking for. So I think by Tuesday, you would never have made this, you possibly could, and if it feels too rushed, the candidates, or to hand me any with them, maybe another week or two. This should not take a month. That's too long.
I just want to make sure that we're not making hasty decisions, but we're also not like jogging around.
Yeah. I would say a month in this case would be too long. You're not the only district for an interim superintendent right now, and so there's some good candidates out there, and I would suggest that Anne does speak to them as soon as she can. The only time an interim search can take long, or a interim search for Rochester, was a few years ago, but it was very early in the year, and we went through a false search for the interim position. So that took about two months, two and a half months, included lots of stakeholders, all of that, different timelines, different circumstances. And in this case, I think you could do it in the next few weeks, but I would rather do it more in a month. I think you need to enact it more quickly than that. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay. That just follow up to that, to say, that seems to align with what we've been saying to people who emailed us about, the plans are to keep on with our strategic direction, and what you were saying earlier about an interim, that would be, that would be their MO, is to keep going with the strategic direction, provide the support we need for leadership, help with those situations where they have to help with discipline or something else along those lines, and making sure that all those sort of statutory, I guess, things that a superintendent needs to do are being done, so it would seem like that makes sense.
And I'll just add that, Barb, at the top of the meeting, you talked about the kind of former slash retired model versus like the person who wants to be considered for the permanent role. And I guess in this case, because we're sort of on a, I don't know, quicker timeline, also I just, I think that we want to have a super robust process, that I would be inclined to the former, so the former slash retired person, rather than someone who would have an expectation of being in a candidate pool for next year. So I don't, if board members have other thoughts on that, please share them. But that's my inclination.
I just want to say I would agree with that, and I think especially if we're going to use a process where, and I'm very comfortable, I hope we will vote today, to give you the ability to do some initial vetting, I'm very comfortable with that, but I think because we want to use an open process with our community for figuring out who's the longer-term person, I also would lean towards somebody who's not interested in the longer-term role, but somebody who can be an ambassador and help see us through this time.
Right, and would be an experienced, you know, already an experienced and seasoned superintendent.
I had a thought that she started cutting it a little bit.
There is a combination that she wants to have a retired. We bring the name to the sentence, so that we can have it. Is that what I'm correcting? Yeah, I think that's the gist of it, Virginia. I think what I said was that I would be inclined toward the sort of retired model versus the person who might want to be considered for our permanent role, so that when we are looking at our search for our permanent role, it feels much more open and robust, right? We're not like selecting someone now who's then feels like they have a leg up in that search. Do others feel that would sound like that? So I'm curious. When I commented, that's what I said, I share Anne's perspective, and just added a little more, I don't, nobody else has spoken to it.
I would agree, because we don't want to give the perception that that person could actually come into this permanent role, and then not get everyone involved in that process among the community, of which would be a mistake on our part.
I would just go into use the people in your circle, you have it, or we are going to post in MSBA's website, or other websites, or in Tom's position.
The question is, is there going to be a public, would there be a public posting of the position?
I would say with your district, that's not necessary. We certainly could. We will put it on our website, and we'll see if it's available, it will slow down the process. I think the distinction between whether the board is going to allow the interim to apply for the long-term position is an excellent conversation, because I know there are candidates, the candidates who would see it on our website are those looking for career advancement. They go to our website, say, oh, this is open, and they apply, they feel it's upward in their career trajectory. And by posting it on our website, we are implying that they have the opportunity for the permanent position that they could throw their hat in the ring. So we're implying that by posting it, if that makes sense. That's different than posting it on your website for EEOC requirements, again, if you're there, that you might want to put it out there, so you need those requirements. I don't, we need to drum up trust in your position, which is the other reason to post it on our website. Anyone who's interested has already contacted me, or perhaps have reached out to Anne. It's the middle of the contract year, early, middle of the year. Is the middle of contract year, early middle of year. So sitting superintendents are not going to be applying for the interim job. Unless they're really unhappy and want to break their contract in the current district to gamble that they have a shot in the long term. That chance is probably about a zero percent chance. You never know, but that's a zero chance. The people who will be applying for it, who's posted, answer to make a bigger deal or advertising it to get word out. Those people are looking for a job. Either they're not on a contract currently, or they're not a superintendent and they're willing to leave whatever investment decision they have on the chance to apply for this to get the long term job. Even though it's a risk, they need to make that decision. Or it's people that are former superintendents that are retired, very plugged into the industry, especially across the area. And want to help. I think you keep it simple with the timeline out. You're operating under because you want a very robust time comes to search for your three year contract. Hopefully longer superintendent. And that the muddiness of having somebody in the position who's going to apply, might apply. That muddy circumstance can sometimes affect that. So clarity, I'm sorry to talk to you so much, I just need to clarify this. Clarity of expectations and imaginations about the opportunity of the interim to apply for this position. I would be in that direction where when I call people today, to let them know that they will and will not have the chance to apply. Any MMBD here would be unfortunate for some of these people that want the long term job. They could simply apply when you have the position posted and you have a three or four month search. Then they simply apply and go through normal, normal process. But this isn't quite that circumstance. And I'm going to get after this candidate, so I just would appreciate a decision on that.
I have some comments. So just, I have about two or three different kind of questions here. But one would be, you said apply. And I might, if you can clarify again what that means when we talk about an application. If, it sounded like that can be an informal conversation, but is there an actual application? Or is there, can you speak to that a little bit in terms of, you know, we said people could reach out and they could apply. Does that mean that they can have a conversation or they need to go through a specific process?
Okay, yes. So because we want to make sure that we're not legal advice to HR, the EOC requirement might be you post on your website for a week or 10 days, whatever the policy might be in your district. The folks that have been contacting you might reach out to Anne. The things that they would want to submit should be or whatever is on the website. And it might be simple as contact information, maybe it's history and maybe one reference. And that's fairly simple and that's standard for a search that you should call so and so about my work history. And my resume, but I haven't updated it in a year. Those sorts of things, but I wouldn't make it difficult to apply with lots and lots of hoops to jump through. A lot of the people that are just wanting to tell the former superintendents probably won't jump through thirty hoops. They just want to help, but they should apply in some way, some form. I don't think a cover letter would think of a resume or a work history would be acceptable. And then of course, maybe one or two things like that. And that should be whatever might go on your website, just in case someone does really want a shot at this job. And so there should be a deadline to apply, and it's just that you would be in a way, again, near each other should dictate that. So the informal process could continue if you offer the board chair to have this conversation. And yet the materials should still be submitted to her, which she would then share with the district office to file with. Does that make sense?
I think so, yeah. Is, is there anything in terms of the questions or any things, the conversations, anything they'd recommend? I think you rec, I think you spoke to that a little bit already, right? Like our opportunity to share who we are so that they can understand what we are and what we're looking for. And then just any other informal questions that they want, that, that Joe Casey wants to ask or.
Because it's one on one, she's not bound by the requirements that they want to be in long. So her conversations and I don't know if Amanda's right word, but she can really get to know these people. Phone call, video call, like that, have a copy somewhere. She can do that vetting because she is not, not the whole board, so EOC doesn't apply to her activities. When that person meets the full board, you may want to ask some questions or need to ask them in sort of quasies, you're going to get to know them better as well. You need to be careful what you ask and there are other questions that you're all really familiar with. You can't ask about protected categories. But I would recommend that you ask and they can think relative to what you need in order. You know, anti racism, familiar experience in eating, student achievement, communication skills, those sorts of things. You'd want to make sure you as a board get to ask them in the meeting whenever you meet with them yourselves. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, that was good. I think, I had one more question that I, that I forgot and another one that is more of a statement. But I'm presuming that like we, even after we, as we're going through this process that the district will post information about how we've come to this choice or the process or something to our website so that people understand why this decision was maybe like this. Because I think some people might think, oh, well, we rushed through making this decision, you know. And what you were saying is because it's imperative that we need to move things along, that this is a person to move that strategic direction, that it should be reassuring in terms of why the process is sort of like it is. And then what we, what we've talked about in terms of a long term process, so. And then can we, maybe I have a question built off of that. Can we be, well, never mind. After we would get an interim in place, then we would have that conversation obviously about a permanence. We would start that process, so.
Yeah, and what I heard you say, Barb, is that a good interim could also be very supportive during that process.
Correct, correct. Sometimes interims can be replaced, we actually worked with several in a couple of different districts. They can be a great resource because people will contact them and say, what's it really like? No, in a situation. If you want them involved from a perspective of being an advocate, as an ambassador for the position. Without recruiting people or leading people on because you don't want to give people the soul. I think they have, they got one of the candidates, they spoke to the superintendent. You also, board members should be careful, even with this interim search, not to perceive it as recruiting people. For the opportunity to be your board, you're the higher authority, you're the decision maker. And if you reach out to someone and say, you're interested in the interim opportunity, you should call our board chair. They may hear something other than what you intend. And so I would try to, as board members, stay above this conversation, out of the weeds. And allow the chairman to have those in-depth conversations. People know about this opportunity, I don't think you do any recruiting. And it's just the messaging that I can send can get a little sticky as well. You as board members should really care a little bit.
I think the, the only other comment I was going to make is people were going around sharing about using, you know, retirees to do this work. And I'm, I'm in agreement with that too. I just want to make that clear. I, I know that we did that in a similar situation with our high school a few years ago where we had a retired principal who came in to fill the gap for a year. And I think that worked pretty successfully. I had that years ago when I was teaching where it was a retired superintendent who came back to be a principal at a school. So it seems like it's, it's not an unusual circumstance that there are people that are willing to do this. And then, as you said, just for the year, so.
Yep.
I have a clarifying question. Barb, this is Sarah. I just have a clarifying question. Can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you, Sarah.
I understand the public, the open meeting laws and the, the data privacy laws as it relates to when somebody becomes a finalist, which is defined as meeting with the school board. I hear you to be saying that's meeting with the whole school board as opposed to meeting with the board chair. And so can you just provide clarity? Or are there things specifically that, assuming we give this authority to Anne, that she needs to be aware of so that we're not crossing that, or we're aware of where that threshold is, I guess?
Thank you, that's a great question. So there's two different opinions on the open meeting law. And I'm not sure your district adopted policy 213 where you treat the city as the board. If you treat them as, you do it relative to the open meeting law. Some districts have adopted that. So even though it's less forum, if a committee of people were to meet with interim superintendent candidates, it still needs to be posted and be open and most publicly. So I'm not sure where you are with that. Generally, MSBA is very cautious with the law. We say if one or more is involved in the conversation, the open meeting law applies. And that's only because there's different opinions from the courts or as, does it have to be less forum or is it more than one? So we take the very, very derivative terms of wanting to ensure that nobody accuses you of having meetings behind closed doors, even if it's two or three of you. So one person does alleviate that concern. The open meeting law just simply would not apply. We do have districts that rather than the board chair alone, have chosen to have the vice chair. Meet with or talk to candidates and bring folks back. I had one district last year that had a hot committee of great people that, that are candidates because their policy 213 didn't state that their meetings were necessarily public, even though three of them. So we always defer to protocols and what really has been the past practice of stateless parties. Our recommendation is always, one person is definitely safe from open meeting law violations. And it's usually the board chair. And if the board for whatever reason wants another person to be involved, you can certainly do that. You just say, check with your local council around when and if those meetings go public. So is your comfort level with having one person do the vetting? In conjunction with EOC because we would recommend anyone that you don't feel is a strong candidate. Or if you want to let them fall as well. That's a long, is it long, Virginia?
No, I appreciate it. I think it's really helpful. And I just want to flag for the board, we have not adopted 213. Our open and closed meetings are defined under policy 205. I will say it has been our practice to post and notice the committee meetings. And I think that's something we will continue to do. And I just want to say again, I am firmly in the boat of Anne should have the authority to do this. And I fully trust her ability to bring us a final candidate that we can share.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions right now. Board members, please know that, that Barb and MSBA are here as a resource. If you think of a question an hour from now or tomorrow, please just reach out to her. I think she can, she'll share her email address with us so that we can reach out to her. But she's been on.
Can I share myself to everyone?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. My phone number is five oh seven. Five eight. Five five oh one. Five oh seven, five oh eight, five oh one. And you can call anytime, call or text, we can all be on the same page as well. She'd be happy to use any of us, use some, just some information.
And she's been an amazing support for me already and just even figuring out how to get to today. So here we are. So can, can.
Barb, it might help us hear everybody else better if you're in your microphone. There's just like a weird back and so, even though I have actions on.
Did you anticipate in the action item, or do we need to add to the action item, the motion to authorize the chair to visit with potential candidates?
The action item is just, is very general, so it can say whatever we want.
Or do I, should I make a separate one?
You can, it doesn't need to, that can be the motion. So the action item is, is written generically enough that, that the motion can do that. So if you.
So can I make, I'd like to make the motion authorize the chair to visit with potential candidates, I'll be happy.
So the language is authorize the chair to.
Visit with potential candidates for an internal superintendent.
For an internal superintendent. An interim superintendent and bring one candidate, one finalist to the board. Heather, I, I, our clerk is online, so I'm going to make sure she got that. Heather, I can.
I didn't get, I got.
Authorize the chairs to.
Do you want me to email it to you? Authorize the chair to, I wrote this down when Barb was talking. A motion to authorize the chair to visit with potential candidates for, I'm just going to slow down, I'm going too fast.
Got it.
Interim superintendent.
Yep.
And bring one finalist to the board.
Okay.
So. I'll move, Abdi Hakim is second.
Okay, a motion is on the table from Sarah and a second from Abdi Hakim. Is there any further discussion?
Are we going to then separately approve the interim superintendent's search?
That is this, that's what we're, yep. So we're on the.
It's not, it's general, that's what I understand.
Right, the decision to move forward, this is the decision that we're making to move forward. So we're making a, a decision to move forward in this way.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Heather, could you call the roll? Yep.
Okay. Anne Casey.
Aye.
Virginia Mancini.
Aye.
Aye.
Colin Cox.
Colin Cox.
Aye.
Ken Morrison.
Aye.
Abdi Hattie Mabrahine.
Aye.
Sarah David.
Aye.
Heather Wilby, aye. Motion carries.
All right. I need, I know we have folks that need to get back to their students and other folks that need to get back to their jobs. So any, anything else further right at the end here? Barb, I see that your hand is up.
So just for my thinking, I was thinking of staying. And this doesn't have to be a motion, because it's a basis. Do you feel that your superintendent will have the opportunity to apply for a permanent position or not?
No, so I've seen two noes at the table here.
No.
I'm seeing a Virginia's, I know. I'm seeing, I'm seeing no.
Yes, no.
You nodded, I think you were nodding, no.
Well, whatever, yes, I was trying to say.
Virginia, the reason that I understand, Barb, is that you, the way that you explain it, that they can be part of our robust. Search and help us to engage with stakeholders and it kind of shifts the conversation, it shifts the dynamic between the board and the interim. So it can be a benefit for us to do this, is that my understanding?
Yes, I would say, in my opinion, I have seen it working very well, and it's very clear. The interim superintendent gives permission with the board to find the next superintendent. And they don't have, if they want the job, it gets a little messy. Now, it has to work for other districts. So I'm not saying you should if you want to. It's simply cleaner if they know exactly what parameters are and they'll have a shot at the long term job. They just need to go through the whole process, which is much more robust than what we're talking about in this case. So yes, that's a great question, thanks for clarifying it. Okay?
And I, and I would be more involved, not, of when you talk with those. Letting them know that they would not be a candidate for the, for the.
The main event.
Virginia, one of the things I said before that I don't think you could hear is that my, part of my reasoning for this, and I heard Anne echo the same thing, is that we have to use such a condensed process right now that we can't deeply engage our community. And so by doing this, it's really clear that we value engaging our community in this. The timeline on this is such that we can't. And so whoever's in this role is going to help us moving forward, identify someone in partnership with our community.
Yeah, I would just echo what Sarah and Virginia says. We need time, we need community, to reach out to community stakeholders to get their feedbacks. So that's going to be long for this finding superintendent. That's why I'm saying no.
Okay, I think there's consensus on that, Barb. And I, I agree with all that. And also, I mean, just when you said, you know, that person can support the board through the process. I mean, we will have one person on this board who has ever been through a superintendent search process by the time we are going on this. And so having a support person right here would be, I, that would be amazing. I think I have needed a lot of support in the last week and I think that's going to continue to go forward. So I really appreciate that piece of it as well.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you so much, Barb. You've been an amazing resource. And I know you will continue to be so. And I will, I'm sure you and I will be in touch very soon. And I guess with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ken, second by Sarah. Heather, could you please call the roll again?
Yes. Colin Cox.
Aye.
Ken Morrison.
Ken Morrison.
Aye.
Anne Casey.
Aye.
Virginia Mancini.
Aye.
Aye.
Abdi Hattie Mabrahine.
Aye.
Sarah David.
Aye.
Heather Wilby. Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes and we are adjourned at toll fifty-two. Thank you. All right, the motion passes and we are adjourned at 12:52. Thank you.